Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, April 5th, 2021 Regular Council Meeting of the City of Beller Beach. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Here's the flag of the United States of America and here is the held up for which stands the foundation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please bow roll.
Councilmember Robin Aki.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Here.
Councilmember Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Rita Spoh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
And City Attorney Fred Riley.
Here.
And Glenn Gunn has joined us on the telephone, correct, Patty?
Uh, Zoom.
On Zoom, okay, very well. Just want her to reflect that in. Okay, first item of business is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? By Dave Gaddis, a second.
Second.
Leslie Notaro. Any discussion? None on council? I can't see the Zoom, so I... Is Patty, are you monitoring that?
Yes.
Okay. Glenn Gunn has no comments?
Um, I just wanted to make sure that we're all agreeing surely to the agenda with respect to the Advisory Board.
Can you hear that?
I heard that. I think I know. I think we heard that there was an application. Glenn Gunn is... I think Glenn, if I say this wrong, just let me know. I believe Jody Shirley placed an application this afternoon for the Citizen Advisory Board, and I was just informed tonight that John Handzik also placed an application. Did you receive that, Patty?
Yes, sir.
She's saying yes. So we have two applications. We were going to consider three people. There's five slots. We now have two more people, so the motion would have to be made by someone to amend the agenda to add those two applications so that we could consider all five tonight. So if council... If someone on council likes that idea, make the motion, we'll vote on amending it, and then we can take the whole agenda.
Mayor, just so you know, there's a sixth application, but it's been held till the Board of Adjustment meets. There's six total applications.
Okay.
He applied, he didn't resign until... Because they have a hearing in a month, so...
Okay. Well, here's the thing. I mean, if we vote tonight and we put five people on, then that person would be an alternate. Is there a reason... I don't know the person. I don't know the reason, so why does it...
Not John Hayes, because they're having a hearing next month, and he felt that because of his experience, he should go through that and then volunteer for the other board.
We would have to hold up the board placement.
I understand.
Yeah, I mean, that's a little bit of an issue only because what you and I were discussing today regarding the Audit Committee, so...
So I'm just...
I'll go with whatever council thinks, but I just think we should maybe vote on the five tonight. I get a nod from Dave Gaddis. Leslie?
Um, we don't have the applications and resumes for the other two, do we?
I don't think Patty got an application, did she?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You didn't have the applications and resumes for the other two?
I have Mr. Handzik, that he just handed in, and I have Mr. Hayes in my office.
And how about Jody Shirley? I mean, even though she's a known entity, do we have her resume and application?
Um, I emailed that out to council.
Okay.
To me, maybe we put all of them off until next time, and we have all the applications and resumes.
We could do that. Lynn and I were talking. We might have to do that anyway due to some of the technicalities. It's not going to mess you up with the Audit Committee, is it? Okay. Yeah, I'm saying no. Yeah, maybe we'll table that, but why don't we just leave it on the agenda then and table it when we get to it, then we can vote on the six. Thanks.
Mayor?
Yes?
Um, Councilmember Gunn, did you have a comment?
No, I'll accept the... I'm saying perhaps vote on the four positions for which we have four applications for, and reserve the fifth, hoping to tell if they just review the ones from Mr. Hayes and Mr. Handzik, but I can agree with it.
It's hard to hear him, but I think he said he was okay with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, and I'm having a hard time hearing him also.
Yeah. We could get that microphone up close on that. All right, so we'll... We don't have to amend this. We're not... We're going to... I mean, we have everyone's word on, and we're going to table that vote when we get to it, okay? That's what we're planning on doing? Okay. Just wait, everybody ask her for consideration. So then we can approve the agenda as is. We have motion, we went through discussion. Any other comments on council? Citizens? Back to council. Last word going to Dave Gaddis.
None.
Okay. All of a sudden, we can do a voice vote to approve the agenda. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Agenda is approved. Seven to zero. Okay, the next piece is the citizens' comments. We're going, because of the virus here, we're going to ask that you come up here, speak right into this microphone, because the people cannot hear you if you don't keep your mouth like about an inch away. These mics are not that sensitive. Please give us your name, your address. You have three minutes to speak to the council. Please address the council, and please follow the rules of procedure that we have for addressing council, which basically means speak nicely, speak the way we speak with everyone else. Anyone like to speak? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay. Citizen comments are closed. Number three is the presentation of the Fennel's County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff, we have someone here.
Good evening, Corporal Curlin from the Fennel's County Sheriff's Office. For the month of February, for the city UCR property and person crime report, there was one larceny. There was no... No one was arrested in the city of Beller Beach. There was a total of 595 events in the city, which resulted in 656 units responding. Of the top three, they were directed patrols, traffic stops, and house checks. There was no crashes in the entire city for the month of February, and a total of 98 citations and warnings issued. That's it.
Okay. Anything else you need to tell us?
Yes, sir.
Anyone on council have any questions or comments?
I had one. Have you noticed any impact having the speed signs on Gulf Boulevard?
Yes, they've had a big impact, especially for spring break. I think two weeks ago, traffic was pretty backed up, and you could tell either people were obliged to buy the speed limit sign, or it was just too congested at the time. But it's definitely made a major impact.
Thank you.
I see we were doing stepped-up patrols again, and I... One of them happened to be right in the block down by, you know, one from me, and looked like it was plenty of customers, so how... What was your experience with that?
A lot of people visiting the area, obviously parking within the designated parking area. Some were, some weren't. Obviously, parking tickets were issued to some vacationers, so hopefully they can learn for the next time they come and visit the city.
Anybody on council?
Sheriff, I have a report for you from the field, something I witnessed, not in Beller Beach, actually out here, Quaker Loop. Last two weeks ago, there was a fundraiser for the deputy who was killed, and I said we weren't going to forget him, and I meant that. I cleared my schedule, I went to it, and not here to brag that I got an award, but I did get an award, and it has his picture on it, and that's not what I'm here to tell you about. I'm here to tell you that the community came out, and they raised $7,000, over $7,000 for his family, and his mom was there, and this other fundraiser is planned right now. So it's just, it was really encouraging to find that there's a lot of other people that feel like I did, and I'm sure like we do here in this community, and I'd like to just pass that on, that, you know, there was good support for him. There was 250 cars, and they couldn't even fit him in the lock anymore. He could go down other car for cars, so it was a big honor to participate in it, and I just want to... I was very impressed with the community, how everybody came together, so... And as well they should.
That's awesome to hear. Thank you very much.
Any citizen comments?
Deputy, thank you very much. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We have Jody and Marv here. Good Marv. Okay.
Mayor, Jody's on her way back from Orlando. Talk to her real quick.
Not going to make it? Or maybe later?
Yeah.
All right, we'll do Marv, so then if she comes later, we'll... I don't think anybody mind taking that out of order.
Back for another award?
That's true.
Um, last month, Marv had his last council meeting, and we gave him a plaque, a desk plaque, and we have one more award and one more commendation. In Beller Beach, we don't have a key to the city, we don't have the President's Award or anything like that, but the highest level of honor that we have in our city is the Certificate of Commendation. And I mentioned when we didn't know the results of the election, we said that we thought no one is more deserving than the council members who serve with the amount of dedication that they do. If I could give you two of these, I'd give you two of them, because you did this twice. Two terms. Marv also served on our Charter Review Committee and served on council, was instrumental in helping with the undergrounding, and I call it your 40-point list of things that had to be done, and he put together with the citizens 40-point list of stuff that had to be done, and I think we darn near got every one of them done between the first council and the second council. So this is well-earned. Congratulations, and it was an honor to serve with you.
So we have similar awards for Jody, and as she gets here, we'll do that later on. We're going to move on to Nigel Pye, though. We have board reports. I know Mike Kelly was here from the Board of Adjustment. I'll call him first. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, council, if you don't mind, I'll pull that down, and I hope the audience can hear me. I couldn't hear the officer in the back, so if this is better, I appreciate it. I'm here to report that Board of Adjustment actually did something this quarter. Since the Board of Adjustment meets on demand and hasn't met since March of 2019 for one of our last hearings, I accepted a suggestion from City Manager Lynn Reeves that we get together as a board and have our own training session. So on March 11th, the board here in council chambers did meet for a little over an hour with a very, very informative and a very, very relaxed meeting to go over the procedures, to explain why the Board of Adjustment even exists, explain the powers, the protocol, and most of all, to help them understand the application process. Anybody that's been to a Board of Adjustment meeting knows, Dave, you've been through it as an applicant. It's tough enough as an applicant to make sure you go through everything correctly, but the criteria questions that the average applicant goes through are difficult, number one, to understand, difficult to fill in, and if you don't get all affirmative votes on the criteria, the board or a special magistrate will deny your application. It's only fair that every citizen get a due process protocol from the Board of Adjustment, and that's why we had our training session. Here in a period of four months, when Dave first applied for a year variance back in 2018, we did four hearings in a span of three months. Now we've had two years and absolutely no variances. That's a good thing for the city, it's a bad thing for the board, but this training session was enabled us to bring new members up to understand what's going on. I will finish by saying there are, to my knowledge, Patty, we have no alternates on the Board of Adjustment right now. Is that correct?
Correct.
And just like you said, Lynn, Mr. Hayes is seriously considering or has applied for a position on the Citizens Advisory Board. He informed me after the training session he thought he'd be leaving our Board of Adjustment if he is chosen to sit on the Citizens Advisory Committee, so I encourage anybody interested to please put your names in as alternates and potential voting members of the Board of Adjustment. So all I've got is any questions I'd be glad to talk to. Glad to answer.
Mike, first, I want to thank you for putting it together. You and I spoke briefly...
I give Patty the credit. She put in a great manual. Thank you very much.
Patty, thank you.
Lynn did it, whoever did it, very well done.
For... You reminded me, I thought it was last year, time flies when you're having fun, but it was two years ago the last time you had it. I did come to one, but I think you took two of your hearings. If anyone's ever seen it, I mean, Mike Kelly is probably the best person in this city when it comes to knowing how these procedures go. To watch him run a meeting and actually give the information is incredible, so that's a great opportunity that anybody had to study, if you will, under you in that setting. So I... The only... I wish I'd known about it earlier, and maybe we could have even arranged to tape something like that to show it to other people, because something like that would have been very helpful, I'm sure, you know, to a newcomer, so...
Thank you very much. A compliment. For newcomers especially, it can be very, very intimidating as a board member. You can be intimidated by the applicant and the audience, so I really hope that we continue that. Lynn, thank you for suggesting that we have the training session, because to my knowledge, we do have another variance coming up soon.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, hang on, just want to make sure if there are any other comments in council, but just so everybody knows, as Mike said, this is a quasi-judicial board. They don't report to the council. They're on their own, and like you said, if you get it wrong, then the city can find itself at the wrong side of the lawsuit and all kinds of other problems. They don't get it wrong, so it's a... That's a lot of credit to you and the board. It's a great job.
We'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any other comments? Citizens, any comments? Mike, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Park and Rec Board, do we have someone here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Tammy Lavenda. I'm Park and Rec Board Chair. So we meet monthly, and I know I was here, I think, the month before last, and we talked about a couple of events that we were discussing for this calendar year. So after some feedback from residents, the Park and Rec Board voted to move Jazz in the Park, which was originally scheduled for May, to a little bit later in the year. We feel that there were still some concerns, and we thought it would be better to wait until everyone that wants to be vaccinated could be vaccinated, and also to make sure that the COVID numbers were kind of where we need them to be for everyone to feel safe and want, if they wanted to attend the event. So our goal is to keep the budget for the event at approximately one-third of our annual budget, so around $2,000, but we'll discuss that more and look for feedback as the event gets closer, but we're looking for maybe the beginning of October or something like that. Our current activity calendar is on the city website, and the events are going well. The blood drive was a success as it was booked to capacity, and I want to thank everyone that participated. My cell is listed in several places on the city website, so if you have any suggestions or requests for classes or events, I welcome your phone calls. And then as of today, there are... Because we've had requests, so we kind of sourced them out, but there are Beller Beach men's and women's t-shirts, tank tops, Beller Beach stickers, and then koozies, like for water bottles. I don't know if you can read it very well, but everything is here. They're different sizes, different colors, so Lynn's going to post the pricing, and if anybody has interest... I've just had some people ask, and we were able to get some good pricing. We were going to do it at the Jazz Fest, but because we moved it to the fall, we thought it would be a good idea to get them into City Hall, so Laura will have them like behind the desk if anybody's interested. And then lastly, we had two members on our board resign for personal reasons, so I'd like to thank Riff and Deb for volunteering their time and talent, but if anyone is interested in becoming a member, it'll be posted on the city website, and we welcome your application, so... Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Oh, yeah, Frank.
Years ago, I guess maybe three or four East Abbot Beller Beach license plates for Danny played in front of the cars. Have you guys looked into that? Because I've got questions from other neighbors and saying, you know, we can't get them.
You know, I have one, and I bought it down in San Key, so I could go to where I bought it. They have two left. I bought one for me, and I bought one for my neighbor, and like, I didn't know there was more interest, so I'll definitely go and see if they can order some more of anything than here. So there's no problem.
Tammy, I have a question for you. Last... When we did the festival last time, that was entirely paid for, 100% with contributions from outside sponsors. You made... The city, after all is said and done, the city made $1,700. Didn't cost the city a nickel, and they used that $1,700 to fund the other events, and I think you wound up leaping about $1,100 in the bank because they, you know, pulled it hit and the events had to stop and everything. I know there is a budget for this, but is there plans to try and reach out and do similar sponsorships, maybe with particular things like Jazz Festival and stuff like that?
Sure. That's no problem. No one has mentioned it until today, and so we haven't spent a dollar of the budget. I have no problem trying to source that out. I've actually had a couple of people come to me looking to sponsor it, so yeah, no problem.
Okay. Anyone have council comments? Citizens, any questions? Great. Just keep us apprised as how things are going, and, you know, you're welcome back here every month if you'd like, but we like to just hear at a minimum of quarterly reports, so if you could just, you know, keep us advised how things are going. Thank you.
No problem. Thanks.
Hiding and zoning board? I see some people. Jaycee.
Greetings, Mayor, Council, and welcome to the new members of City Council. I got a call here a few while... A while back from Lynn Reeves, and every time I get a call from Lynn, I think, uh-oh. Well, he asked if our committee would assume the code revision and investigation. I polled the committee, who consisted of, at that time, Angela Berry and Brenda Buonasera, Wanda, who has been reporting to council for us because of my absence, and Rudy Davis, and we said yes, we would help out the city. Wardley knows that we didn't realize what size that code book was.
You don't tell you that.
We could never find the attorney. He disappeared. He... I'm sure he's very familiar with it, but Lynn asked us to do it, and we met five times, and I can say that all members were present at every meeting, and we spent almost two hours per meeting and submitted the final report to the city on some of the observations and recommendations from our committee. And I know that everyone on our committee gets an Attaboy Award, now believe me. And Mr. Mayor, this committee was tough. It was a tough assignment. It really was, and I thank them for helping, and our service to the city, we liked to do it, and we were glad to do it, and if everybody spent us much time as our committee on the city situations, I think we'd be in pretty good shape. I have to thank Lynn Reeves and Patty and Laura for backing us up. Every meeting, they were there, and even a person named Warman used to come in and put needles in me at every meeting, but we survived. And Mr. Mayor, I'm sure you got the final draft, and your committee did, and we were proud to serve the city. Thank you.
Let me, on behalf of the town, thank you and your committee for all the hard work and effort in the middle of a pandemic nonetheless. Okay, that's exceptional work. I did have a chance to read through it. I guess everyone else has. Tonight, we're not going to debate at all. I had some observations, some questions, things I saw. There was a lot of work that was put into that, and so I think what we're going to probably do is set this up. I spoke with the city manager this morning. We'll probably set it up for a future work session where we can discuss it further and review it, and I also want to let you know, because you did another thing that was a tremendous amount of work a year ago, right before COVID hit, you gave us a 90-plus-page book about different options for this city, all planning options and things. Some was stuff that we're probably never going to do, but some stuff in there bears looking at. Then the virus hit, and then everything, you know, kind of went kaplooey, but we're going to be reviewing that. I want you to know that, okay? I spoke with the city manager today. We're going to be putting that on the work session, and my new council members are going to hate me. The old ones already do, but that's okay. It's a lot of work to read through all of this stuff. You put it together, we're going to review it, and we're going to give you some opinions and, you know, and see what we can enact and what we can do, because you guys put a lot of hard work in it. So I don't have any questions for you tonight, per se. I think we may have questions down the road on some of the things, but I will open it up to the floor to anybody, you know, on the council and then to the citizens, but I want to thank you and the committee for that report and for that prior report, and I want to let you know that we will be getting on that pretty quickly, like within the next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And I had my shots.
I got my last one. Anyone else? Hang on, Jaycee. Is there any citizen comments? Yes, Patty?
Um...
Glenn?
Councilmember Glenn.
Okay, go ahead. Glenn Gunn. He's on Zoom.
I just wanted to pass on my kudos to the man who's doing a wonderful job. Well, I think this is the first body of work that I've seen where we tied our future directions and actions to our vision and goals and the strategic plan, so it's a really landmark breakthrough for the work that's gotten done, and it certainly has the fingerprints of various people like Juan Masrere, who is one of the influentials of the strategic plan, and Rudy Davis, who kind of gets all of that stuff, but kudos to all of the employees who did a great job on that, and I look forward to you being able to work there. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
So for those of you who couldn't hear, Glenn Gunn said kudos a couple times. Excellent job, and that's pretty much that, so... Again, Jaycee, thank you for the hard work.
Did we collect our awards at the door?
You can get your awards at the door, and the Cadillac is waiting outside for you. Just kidding.
You did.
All right, that takes care of the board reports for this one. Next, we go to the approval clause. That's fine. They did a lot of hard work.
Thank you very much.
All right, so now we go to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is approved in its totality. It's item six and seven. So item six is approval of the March 1st, 2021 City Council meeting minutes, and then item seven is approval of the March 15th, 2021, Special City Council Organization meeting minutes. There's no discussion on this, so we approve it en masse. Do we have a motion? Mike Banker gets the motion. Leslie, second?
No, I have a... Shall I say a correction to the minutes?
Okay. Um, hang on. Let me get with this. Here's what we're going to do. Normally, we'd have to remove it from the consent agenda. Is it something simple that we can... Or something that's going to be debatable, or...
Yes. On the March 1st meeting, item number seven, it says the motion was made to table agenda item number six.
Ah, this is my one.
This is, yeah.
Council, I normally don't like to dispense with rules, but does anyone have a problem with dispensing of the rules for that change? There's no problems whatsoever. Okay. Thank you, Leslie. Leslie, if we have that in the future, just say that, just so we can keep it still with the consent agenda, or take it out of the consent agenda if there's really an issue, so no problem. So we got a motion. Leslie's made the second. There's no discussion on it. Again, I'll call the question to approve the consent agenda, and that's approval of item six, approval of the March 1st, 2021 City Council meeting minutes, and item seven, approval of the March 15th, 2021, Special City Council Organization meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That's not imposed, right?
Correct.
Seven to zero passes. Item six and seven are pre consent agendas complete. Okay, now, I'm gonna say before we do, because I'm gonna call items six, eight, and 10. Let me call three of them together. Does anybody have a comment if I call three of them together? We're gonna table these. We're on the regular agenda, okay? And so this is where we would have done the appointment of Ron Gigantic, Mark Goldman, and Mark Reisberg. We voted on that. We all agreed that we were gonna, because there's three other applications coming in that are not in our packet, that we're gonna hold this off till our next meeting. So.
Mayor, may I make a suggestion? Some of the candidates are here tonight, and it may not be as convenient for them to be here next time.
Right.
I would like to hear their presentation if they'd like to speak.
Okay.
If they choose to do so.
Here's what we'll do. That's a good suggestion. I did see some people here. Let's call each one. Let's get a motion. Let's get a second. If they're here and they wish to speak, they can speak, and we can table it afterwards. So we're not gonna vote tonight, but we'll remember your presentation, obviously. And if you come tonight, I think that's a good suggestion. Yes. Everybody in favor of doing that? Okay, so let's go with item eight, number one. Item eight is consideration of an appointment of Ron Gigantic to the Citizens Advisory Committee. This is the citizen council appointment of the committee member. First, I'll need a motion. So move. And a second, Gaddis and Aki. And any council comments first? Ron Gigantic here? Ron, you'd like to speak?
Not Leslie's questions.
And you're welcome to come back when we reschedule it, too. So that's up to you. But you're here, and we want to give you that opportunity.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for this. We had last-minute flood of applicants here. Okay, does anyone want to make a motion to table this?
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, wait. Okay, yeah, you can move the motion. You can table it. Yep. Okay? Second, all in favor of table? Aye. Aye. That's it. Sorry, Ron. You have to wait a month. It's table till the next regular, next regular or special meeting. If we have a work session, if we have everything together, we can do a fast session before and get these Item nine, consideration appointment of Mark Goldman to the Citizens Advisory Committee. Motion. So move. Dave Gaddis.
Second.
Second, Robin Aki. Counsel comments? None. Is Mr. Goldman here? Mr. Goldman's in the back. Would you like to speak tonight?
No, I'll wait till the, you know, if he has a good chance.
It's like the NFL. He is elected to defer, so he's going to wait until the next one. Have a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Dave Gaddis, second.
Second.
Ron, I'll give Frank Banker here. All in favor of table? Aye. Aye. Pass the seven to zero. It's table. Last, we have consideration, item 10, consideration of appointment of Robert Reisberg to the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Motion. So move. Dave Gaddis, second. Robin Aki.
Any council comments? Is Mr. Reisberg here? Mr. Reisberg's in the back. Would you like to speak?
I will join the other applicants who prefer.
He's going to elect to defer until the second quarter. Okay.
He tried. It was a good suggestion. You could also make the motion if you'd like.
Motion to table.
There you go. Second. Second to Robin. And all in favor?
Aye.
Pass the seven to zero. It's table. Sorry, folks. We will get this as soon as we can on the next agenda. Okay, item 11. We have to get something done over here. This is the request, city manager has made a request authorization to utilize excess Bellevue Island Estates undergrounding project funds for loan reduction and to refund and prepay the residents. Description is to utilize the excess project funds to prepay loans in the amount of $330,717.50 and refund $78,479.61 to residents who prepaid in full. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Rita Swope makes the motion.
Second.
Second, Dave Gaddis. Rita Swope.
I'll defer to the city manager.
City manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the undergrounding project, and this morning I got an additional $15,000 check to prepay another home. So the motion for the 330, if we can amend that to say $345,866.69. A resident came in this morning, because this is the month they can prepay.
Lynn, may I just cut in one second? That's not in the motion itself, so we don't have to amend it. That's just in the description. So you put that out there. I will reread it when we do the description when I call the question, but we don't need an amendment.
Okay, okay. So the $78,000 is explained here. There were 25 prepays, and that'll be split up depending on if they had overhead services. So, and I gave you the spreadsheet to kind of go over that a little bit with you, as far as we will be paying on the loans, the A, B, and C, that money will be spread out equally. And then they will do an updated amortization schedule, and that's when we'll determine what the assessments will be reduced by to the people that are paying by assessment. So all I'm asking tonight is to prepay the loan in the amount of $345,866.69 and start the refund process for $78,479.61. Myself, the accountant reviewed it, and then I had a public advisory group who helped us with the loan a couple of years ago review it, and that's all the data that was provided to you. So we're comfortable with those numbers, and we'll send a letter to the residents and let them know that, hey, we saved you money, and we're gonna give it back to you if you prepaid, and your assessment will be adjusted accordingly in next year's taxes.
Lynn, we've said this before, excellent job making this happen and the cost savings. I only have one question. Reading the paperwork and stuff that's with it, because, you know, once you send these checks out, there's no getting them back, okay? Are we, I know we have assurance, we're positive, we're totally comfortable, that this money is ready to be refunded. No one's gonna claw anything back. No one's looking for any, you know, resorts or what have you, right? There's nothing?
No, no. What we, if you look in the, we've got a little $5,000, because we pay every year for the attorney to do a resolution and things like that. And when we do the assessment, we'll make sure there's money set aside for that in the assessment number. But I, no, I'm comfortable with these numbers. I went to a source that actually did the loan. We even talked to Brian Miller Olive, the attorneys that did the loan, because I wanted to make sure all my numbers were good numbers, and my scribbled numbers, as I call them, were within a couple bucks of their numbers. So I think we're pretty confident.
All right.
We are. I have to think. I know we're confident.
Good. That's like the pilot on the plane telling you he's pretty confident he could land it. And so, yeah, you're confident. You're good, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on council? Yes, fine.
One to $78,000. Was there interest if we were on that money, since it was overturned?
No, no. There's a little bit of interest that came from the SBA, but we've been putting it into that account as a total. You know, the 409,000, the 409,000, there's been a little interest, and we've been putting it into that account. So they are gonna get a little bit of interest back.
Citizens?
Anyone else on council? Any Zoom, anything on the Zoom, Patty? Good, okay. I'll put it up to the citizens. Citizens, any questions? Back to council. Rita Swope has last word.
No, I did call the motion.
You got it. Okay, so before the board is to request an authorization to utilize excess Bellevue Island Estates underground project funds for loan reduction and to refund prepay residents. That's the motion. Now, the description has slightly changed. It's utilize excess project funds to prepay loans in the amount of $345,866. I think you said 69 cents?
Yes, Mayor.
That's 69. I can't read my nine and a four. And refund $78,479.61 to residents who prepaid in full. A yes vote gets the city manager to do this. Do I have to call this individually? Because I can go, I can call this in group, right? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Pass the seven to zero. City manager, you're so authorized. Please move forward. Item 12 is to request authorization to waive additional bid requirements for community center closed-circuit TV system and access control system. This was tabled from last month. We are requesting to waive additional bidding to award the $15,672.80 contract to integrated security consultants with the equivalent cameras requested by city council. Motion?
So move.
Dave, I'm sorry. Frank Banker and Dave Gaddis. Frank, you have the floor.
I prefer and city manager, but I read and checked. It looks good.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is, we went back because of the Hype Vision cameras, the not NDAA report, and don't ask me what it, the thing is, I'll have to ask Dave that, but I've went back to the low bidder and asked him to give us a couple prices. They still would be the low bidder, and so instead of rebidding this again, I'm just asking you to waive the additional bidding in the amount of $15,672.80. We had two options that they sent us. I did ask Vice Mayor Gaddis to look at them, because he's in this field, and he did, and he recommended the one we selected. So I'm just asking for council approval. We call.
Just for the people who are here for the first time, council member Gaddis, not council member Gaddis, now Vice Mayor, had questions and issues, so we tabled this last month. Dave, I'm gonna defer to you and see if you're satisfied with this, because I think we were all waiting on your, you know, stamp of approval before we moved forward with it.
Yes, I am. We went back to the bidder who made two suggestions, two different companies, and so I've been a little refulled on work. One of the companies was relatively new in the market, and whenever I tracked back where they came from, they were Chinese-made, and I really couldn't find a reputation on them. The other one, I believe, was Korean-made. Is that right? I think so. Sure. And they were not on the NDAA banned list. The first one that I referred to, I actually reached out to them and requested, even though they bragged about not being on that list, they could not provide me any proof that they were compliant. So that made me feel better about my decision.
I won. I won.
So you're comfortable at this point?
Yes, I am.
Keep going. Counsel, do we have any other questions? For city manager, Dave Gaddis, I'll allow a cross-talk on this, because Dave was instrumental on this. So, any other questions? City, anyone from the city? Any questions from the citizens? Back to council with Frank Banker having the last word.
Take it to a vote.
Okay, nuts. Okay, so I'm gonna call the question, item 12, to request authorization to waive additional bid requirements for the community center closed-circuit TV and access control system. Description is that we are, city manager is requesting to waive additional bidding to award $15,672.80 contract to integrated security consultants with the equivalent cameras requested by the city council. A yes vote allows him to proceed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Pass the seven to zero. City manager, you may move forward. Item 13 is consideration of Resolution 2021-04, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, establishing an audit committee, providing for membership of the audit committee, providing for a section of a chair, providing for duties and responsibilities thereof, providing for meetings and providing for an effective date. The description is this is consideration to establish a committee or review of city annual financials, internal controls, and compliance of policies and procedures. City manager Reeves, you and I had a discussion on this this morning, and I think there's some questions. I think there's a couple of issues legal, and now we don't have the people from, we're thinking about utilizing folks from the Citizens Committee, Citizens Advisory Committee isn't established at this point. So I think your consensus was to table this, but I'll leave the council to do it at this point. But is that, that's what you're looking for?
At this point, yes, Mayor. The requirement, just so the council understands, there's a new audit, to select a new auditor. One governing board member has to be on the committee. That's the requirement, and the rest of the committee can be people that have knowledge of finance and things like that. But that's who will select our next auditor. Our audit contract is pretty much done now that we've had our auditor last year. So we are gonna be sending out the RFP here in the next couple of weeks to put that proposal out there, and then the audit committee would have to review that. But as I said, the resolution kind of mirrors another city, and Mayor and I talked about this this morning. The solution may be to select one council member and just use the Citizens Advisory Committee as the rest of the members. They'll have to meet and review the proposals. Once the RFPs come in, they'll rank them in order, and then they'll bring that to the city council. And that's a requirement now on Florida statute.
So that's what we're thinking about, and there were some issues, you know, because part of this is falling for putting all the council on, and that was something I said, well, if we put all the council on, we have the decision to make, and so there's some legal issues. I think it's best dealt with in a work session. I read the question. I'm gonna ask for someone to make a motion, but if no one makes the motion, it dies for tonight. So I'm not telling you what to do, but does anyone want to make a motion? One's plus, no one. Okay, it'll be, it'll come back another day. Okay? Okay, item 14, consideration of Resolution 2021-03, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, providing the city clerk with authority to transmit adopted charter amendments to MUNICODE and the Florida Department of State and establishing an effective date. This gives the city clerk the authority to transmit charter amendments adopted by the electors of the city for incorporation into the city charter and code ordinances. This is from the March election, okay? The other ones are out there right now, but we have to have two sets. So first, do I have a motion? Leslie Natero is making the motion. Second?
Second.
Second. Was that ready?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Leslie?
I think this is just, it's something we need to do, obviously, and I see no issue with it at all, getting to the state and to MUNICODE, so they're available.
She can't. You have to speak right in front of the mic, so.
Yeah, I think this is, you know, just a very, very simple thing. We have to convey them to the state and as well as to MUNICODE, so they are available online.
Absolutely correct. This is a, the voters have spoken, the charter amendments have passed. This makes it official by putting it in the MUNICODE and the state actually approving it. Patty, can I ask you, I mean, I think we're still waiting on the ones from November. How long does this process take, these folks?
No, we have November, so as soon as this is approved, I can send it to the state.
How long does that take?
Well, I really can't say. I mean, the last time we did it was 10 years ago, so I don't know how long it would take now.
It took them like four months to approve this from MUNICODE, right?
It took a while, yeah.
All right, so, okay, anyway, this has to be done. Any other questions on council? Citizens, any comments? Leslie, you have the last word of the question. Okay, so calling the question on item 14, consideration of Resolution 2021-03, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, providing the city clerk with authority to transmit adopted charter amendments to MUNICODE and the Florida Department of State and establish an effective date. This gives the authority to the city clerk to transmit charter amendments adopted by the electors of the city for incorporation into the city charter and the code ordinances. I'm adding that this is from the March election. A yes vote allows her to proceed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Mayor, could I do a roll call on this one?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You'll call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Bankard?
Aye.
Councilmember Natero?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Manta?
Aye.
So still seven to zero. Passed unanimously, and you may proceed. Patty, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15, consideration of selecting council members as a voting delegate and an alternate voting delegate number one, and an alternate voting delegate number two for the Barrier Islands Governmental Council. That's the big C. We have to nominate and elect the voting delegates and the members. So do we have a motion? So move. Dave Gaddis? Second?
Second. Second.
Leslie Natero. Dave?
I will yield back to the mayor.
I have put my name in for this. I've represented us for the last two years. Traditionally, the mayor is the representative. Other people go. I know Mark Dean used to go all the time, and Leslie Natero, I've seen there, Juan DeShwer, who's there from time to time. So anyone's welcome to go. The big C just asks that the mayors represent, so I'm more than willing to continue to do that. I get my second shot tomorrow. I'll be going back in person again. They have given that option. I've stayed away from it till now, but I will be going back in person. So I'll be more than happy to represent the city. We would really need two other people, though, for alternates, so, you know, so.
I'll volunteer for all of you.
Leslie, okay?
I'll volunteer for all of you.
And Frank.
And I actually did put my name in for nomination. I just thought, whenever I looked at the list, I did see Vice Mayor. I saw a council member, and I thought it'd be good to get to know the neighbors. I see that you're on, you're representing us on other committees, and I'd like to put my name in that.
For the big C?
Yes.
Yes.
The primary?
Yes.
All right, so let's just do primary then?
Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Gunn had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think it's very important, the collegial working relationship with our neighboring cities. And I think the person who represents Belle-Aruche can't be uncovered by controversial public relations issues or legal actions. So my tendency is to lean towards fresh blood, to fresh outlook, and to support Dave Gaddis. I know it's kind of counter to your tradition, but I think we really need to make some considerations here for those reasons. Thank you.
Anyone else on Counsel?
Yeah.
Yes, Frank?
I reviewed in some of these councils or in some of these positions, and it looks like all the towns do have mayors that they've made. So I'm going to make a motion to the mayor.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I, Frank, your observation is correct. And by the way, Frank was at a couple of our meetings, which is pretty amazing because you just got elected. You've come to a few meetings already. I saw him at some close League of Cities. This, the power of the big C is the mayor standing in high. If everyone saw our press conference about home rule last year, it was the mayors who stood up. And it was all mayors who stood up. So it's not that other people aren't welcome. They absolutely are welcome to be there. But I'll tell you what Bill Queen told me when I was first elected. He said, "We want the mayors." Now, Bill Queen's a very influential member of the big C, so. But I will abide by whatever this city says. I'm more than willing to, you know, I'll continue to participate in the big C. But I think they want the power of the mayors. And that's, my, my personal dealings are, have nothing to do with the way I handle myself professionally on this. I will work with anybody on the big C for the goal of pretty much preserving the home rule that we all really covet here. We don't like Tallahassee sometimes, you know, telling us that we're going to have businesses or rental businesses in the next order. So that's what the big C fights for. And the power of that is having the mayors to speak. I know it sounds funny because we're all equal on this council. There's seven people. We all have an equal vote. The mayor really is no different than anyone else. But the perception outside is the mayor is the all-important person. That's what was told to us at the, at the EMO training. That's what was told here. And so that's, that's the political end of it. So I'll keep my name in it, and we'll see how the vote goes. Anyone else? Anyone in the city? And I will bring it back for a vote. We're going to vote on the primary first. So we might as well do a roll call. And you'll vote, it's either myself or for Dave Gaddis.
Councilmember Aki?
Manzo?
Pardon?
I'm voting for Mayor Manzo.
Thank you. Councilmember Bankard?
Mayor Manzo.
Councilmember Gunn?
Councilmember Gaddis, please.
Councilmember Natero?
Gaddis.
Councilmember Swope?
Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Gaddis.
Mayor Manzo?
Manzo. So it's four to three. Dave Gaddis will be our primary representative. Secondary representative, we have Leslie Natero. And Frank? Did you say your name? Frank? Okay. Anyone else want to go first? It says delegate number one and delegate number two. Is there a preference?
No.
Well, you have to vote whatever it's on then. I'll leave it to you, too.
What's your question?
We have delegate number one and then alternate delegate number two. So the first person in list is going to be the one that they go to. If, you know, Dave can't make it, then they're going to go to number one, and then they're going to go to number two. So who wants to be one and who wants to be two?
I'd like to be one.
Leslie?
Ladies first.
Okay. All right, so we'll do alternate number one. We have Leslie Natero. All, we don't have to do it by person. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Seven to zero. You're the alternate. Frank Bankard is alternate number two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven to zero. Frank is alternate number two. All right. Number 16. Consideration of selecting a council member as voting delegate to the Florida League of Cities. You nominate and elect a voting delegate. This, you, last year, they didn't have a convention. So if you go to the convention, or last year, we did it online, you cast the votes. It's pretty much a ministerial thing. The votes are going to pass, but somebody has to count, somebody has to cast them on behalf of each city. So first, let's get this on the agenda. We have a motion. So with Gaddis. And second?
Second.
Discussion. I've put my name in for this. I expect to go to the convention if they hold it in person. So last year, I went virtually. So it doesn't matter who does this, so.
I am nominated, Mayor.
Good, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be nominated? Okay, then let's call the question. So this is consideration of selecting me as your voting delegate for the Florida League of Cities. A yes vote, elects me, all favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Seven to zero. Thank you. I will, they have a convention, I'll be there. Okay. Number 17. Consideration of selecting council member as voting delegate for the Suncoast League of Cities. Nominate and select a voting delegate. This is number 17. First, let's get it on the agenda. Motion? So moved, Dave Gaddis? Second?
Second.
Is that you? Hard to hear from that side, but. Okay, I put, I placed my name in on this. I've been doing this also for the last two years. Suncoast League of Cities has a monthly meeting. They do more lobbying in Tallahassee. And kind of more concerned with the, kind of their agenda. So there's a monthly afternoon meeting with them. And I don't attend every one of those. I try to attend as many as I possibly can. So I'd like to be considered on that. Anyone else?
I would like to nominate the mayor.
Good, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Detective Dave. Anyone else? Okay, then I'll call the question. I, you know, I didn't ask for citizen comments. Are there any citizen comments on? I'll look back when you make virtual act of any citizen comments on either. Nothing on 16, nothing on 17. Okay, let's call the question then. Consideration of selecting council member myself as voting delegate for the Suncoast League of Cities. And again, I'll give you my, you know, my assurance that I will attend as many of these as possible. Again, with COVID, I think this year, we'll be able to do a lot more than we did last year. So all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seven to zero. Thank you. We're moving on to item 18. We're one hour into this. We're moving along pretty quickly. Does anybody need a break? Can you go move to the end?
Mayor?
Yes.
Jody Shirley has arrived. Did you?
I see Jody Shirley is coming. Okay, let's do, anybody have an objection? If I can hear the word down? Let's do it. Jody? Welcome back. I want something for you. Give him his picture back. I wanted to honor Jody Shirley tonight for her work. One-term council member. Many of you know Jody came in with a group that, you know, with Marv and the other, some of the other individuals, Glenn and Nick Bavars, who slowly wanted to make change here. And they were also part of that group that knocked out that 40 items. Jody was instrumental in getting us the storm order, the whole idea of this whole storm order assessment to deal with a problem that we've been talking about for many, many years. A lot of times, she also served on Charter Review Committee. I think you were on committees before you ever got on council. Right? And now she's looking to do some work today. So first, I want to give her the certificate of commendation. Again, as I said before, this is the highest honor that our city has. And it's well-deserved, or I think for anybody who serves on council with the amount of time that's put in and the amount of effort that Jody put a lot of time and effort on council. So I'm pleased to give this to you.
Thank you. Oh, picture.
I am smiling here.
Can't see it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have a couple more. We also have a token of appreciation. We have this, this thing for your, marker for your desk over here. It has your council member status and our city logo on it. So please take that with our gratitude. And Marv said there's his picture. I don't know. But Jody gets her, you get to keep your picture. So thank you very much, Jody.
Thanks.
Unfinished business. Do we have any?
I'll give you stuff in the updates.
Pick it up at your time? Okay. City Attorney?
Very quick report, and that is I wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Bankard and Ms. Natero for winning their seats. And I also wanted to say to Marv and to Jody, I really enjoyed working with both of you. And you were both extremely professional and simply a pleasure to work with. So congratulations.
Thank you, Fred. Anybody have anything for the City Attorney? Citizens? Okay, thank you, Fred. This is your time. Lynn Reeves, City Manager.
Okay, Mayor, Counsel. If you look under tab 20, there's several things there. You know, we initiated a few months ago. We talked to the county about the intersection. We talked to them about speed. This is their draft intersection report. They are going back. One of the suggestions in here was to remove the palm trees at 12th Street. They are also going back to look at, is it beneficial to move the island or is it a bad thing to move the island? Just put it into a normal crosswalk like we have at 6th Street. So there's some information for your reading. Free time, you know. Also, I put in there the traffic sign study that we've got up on Gulf Harbor. They gave me the report for approximately three weeks of it being in there for the month of February. And if you look at the chart, for the most part, the speed limits that were seen were actually under our speed, current speed. But we're continuing to monitor that. Code enforcement report is in there. For you to also read supplemental patrols. I'll tell you after the fact. I haven't got the information back from them. But we had on the 19th and 20th and the second third of April, the county did pay us back $50,000 for the beach access walkover. So we got that reimbursed. So it only cost us $100, so that's a positive thing, that the county is willing to do that. I mentioned earlier, the RFP is going out later this month, and we'll resolve this audit committee selection committee. The mayor and I both received a letter. The FEMA maps that are new are coming out, and they're effective August 24, 2021. We have not gotten the official map, but we will be getting that shortly. Next week, on the 14th, we have our CRS verification visit, and that's our flood insurance rating. It's every five years. And Kyle and myself, I'm giving Kyle some training in it, and we put together a pretty sizable packet, emailed to it. It's going to be something a little different because usually they come here and then we can take them around. This year, it's going to be virtual. So this should be an experience. We, also, our elevation certificate certification for this year is finished. So those are things that are part of the flood insurance requirements. One question that has come up. We're getting ready to pave Harrison and the Belle-Aruche Estates Islands. It'll start somewhere around the 15th of April. And if you recollect, I don't know, a year and a half ago, there was a discussion about that island at the end of Harrison, whether we take it out or make it smaller. There is a meter in there for reclaiming water for that little island. And I know one of our residents has questioned us making the island smaller. I don't know if that's a benefit or not. Just wanted to get feedback from you, or take the whole island out and pave it over. Now, I did talk to a couple residents that mentioned that maybe the island needs to stay there because it'll stop people from going into their driveway. Makes them circle. So just want to get some feedback from the Counsel, what your thoughts are on that. And.
Lynn, have you polled the residents of Harrison? I mean, there, it's one thing for me to say, but I don't live there. What do they think?
Well, I've only talked to a couple of them because it just recently came up because we're paving it. We put a letter out that we're going to pave the street. The ones that it really concerns are the people at the end. And we can do a quick poll and find out what they say. And if they say, "Leave it as it is," then we'll leave it as it is, if that's okay with the Counsel. Or take it out entirely or whatever. And I know Mr. Moss is here, and he's one of the residents that thinks it needs to be smaller. I'm kind of in the middle. I could pave it or leave it as it is.
You can do either of the three, right? So I mean, let's, if we can maybe, you know, if the Counsel agrees, if we can get a survey, explain to them what it means, smaller. I mean, you know, I don't know if you're talking 10 feet, 5 foot, 2 foot, you know.
Well, that means you're going to have to tear out the whole island to make it smaller. You, you just can't cut off part of the curb and put it, put it back around.
Lynn, if you'd like, maybe one day this week, I can just pick you up and we ride out and knock on some doors if you've got time.
We'll, we'll, we'll get that done. And I'm going to be out of the office the rest of the week for family issue. So, but I can get Kyle to do that with you.
Perfect.
So I'll, I'll tell him in the morning.
So let's see what the residents think.
Mr. Moss, did you have anything you wanted to say about? Since you're the one that brought it up most recently.
Just hang on one second. Counsel?
Oh, is that okay?
No, Audubon, he's here, and let's, I'd like to hear from him. Does anybody have, it's Lynn's time right now. We have a resident who would like to speak on this very topic. Does anybody have a problem with bringing him up at this point? No, Mr. Moss? Right here.
Bruno Mads, 216 Harrison Avenue. As Lynn indicated, this problem came up a couple of years ago when trucks and trailers were dragging into my drive because it couldn't turn around. So at that time, I proposed having that island removed. And we did a survey, I did a survey, and the council didn't accept that survey. They wanted a city survey. Mailed out the survey I did, which Lynn showed that 70% of the people wanted that island removed. When the letters were sent out by the city, less than half of them were returned. And there were also a couple items that should be, if they're not up in there, the two homes, there were three homes, there were, west of the bridge are not affected by the island because their trucks can turn around on the street. So, and, and at that point, the city decided to plant some trucks there so the person wouldn't drive into that island. The reason the island, the island was larger was there were two palm trees on that island. And at that time, the fire department got involved and requested that those palm trees be removed because they could not service that area with their big trucks. And that's where we're at right now. Now, it's possible to reduce that island so the trucks can go around easier, eliminate the problem I had, they won't have to back into my driveway, but it won't eliminate the difficulty of the trucks coming around that cul-de-sac. Because that cul-de-sac is the smallest one in the city, and it has an island. I was excited, but I could go either way. But my preference in the long run, I think it'd be easier for the city to remove that island, so it wouldn't be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you'll just let your neighbors, as you see them, know that we'll be coming out and surveying them.
Okay.
Thank you. And back to you, Lynn.
Seventh and 8th Street project is wrapping up. We'll be doing a walkthrough, not this week, but next. You know, and they've just got sod to put down and things, but the paving is done, the curbs are done. The check valve's been put in, the new pipe's been put in, so that is moving forward.
You plan to open the park up soon? Because we still have a sign that says it's closed, and there was still a containment building there.
Well, there's still...
It was like a week ago. I don't know.
Yeah. There's still, their silbarrier's still out in the water. Until they get that sod in and stuff, after that's done, then we'll reopen it. One thing that you do need to know, we're going to have the dock that's there, needs to be removed, and we'll have to budget something in the next fiscal year to put it back, because currently, after going through the project and looking at it, we had an engineer look at it, and it's, it's in bad shape underneath. So we'll, you know, remove it, but the bow ramp will still be there, and then we'll put something in the budget for the next fiscal year to rebuild it.
So the piling, that's back, because the top of it looks fine.
No, it's the pilings. It's the, yeah, underneath the wood's pretty, pretty rough. So I received the cost estimate from Duke for under traffic Gulf Boulevard last, on April Fool's Day, and I thought it was an April Fool's joke. Because it was $5.5 million. And I've sent them an email back, and I'm going to have a little more discussion with them about doing some things like we did with Belleview Estates Island. We kind of hired our own person to put conduit in and things of that nature, and it saved the residents a lot of money. So we'll, we'll go further with that. The kitty's only about four million that we're getting from the counties, so we need some negotiations. So we'll resolve that. Only last thing is work session. Do you want to do one in April? Things we talked about were the review and the code enforcement, looking, you know, at the planning stuff. And what I'll do is I'll ask Patty to, to the new council members, I'm sure they haven't seen that book. We'll need to send that to Frank and Leslie. I'm sure everyone else has it. You've got it all filed right where you know where it's at, right? Everybody's laughing about it.
You might have to resend it all.
Okay. We'll just do that, Patty, but review the book.
We want to set up a date. I mean, I, there's a lot to go through. I wouldn't put too much else on this because we could spend two sessions just going through the planning board's first report, let alone code. So you want to split it up? I mean, it's waited this long, it could wait a month, but I don't, we're going to get into the budget season real soon, so.
Yeah, and the code enforcement things, really, what the council needs to do is tell us what you, give us your feedback on the report, the things you want to change. We can start on that. We can, you know, get the city attorney to start writing the ordinances to update those things. Some of those things in there, in the recommendations, those are very simple to fix, and if the council blesses them, we'll be able to move them forward. But it's not going to be a process that you can do like that. You know, we may go through half the report and say, okay, these things are fine. Let Fred go ahead and start on them, and then we'll go back. It's kind of like the charter, and it's how we did that last year. So we could start with that, send the other report out, and then schedule something. This year for the budget, as I mentioned and gave you the calendar, I'm looking at starting the budget work sessions in June to try to give us a little bit of a head start with the council. So you aren't packed in where you got two or three budget meetings within a couple of weeks period?
And as I remember, the planning board suggested binder, they didn't recommend most of them. They just gave, we asked them to think outside the box, and they came up with some stuff that I think, some of it, it's really thinking outside the box, but we're probably not going to do it. So we might be able to go through it fairly quickly. I think when we get something like the Marina, that's going to be a discussion, you know, so we might want to set up a night just for that. My suggestion would be maybe start with that code one this month, give Duke, Frank, and Leslie a chance to go through that 90-page book, because I've already read it, and, you know, maybe hit that next month. That's just my suggestion. I'll take it in any order. It doesn't matter. So whatever council wants.
Well, some of the, some of the code things, you know, in the planning, the code review report, some of those things are going to be, the council's going to say, yeah, let's go ahead and change those, the wording, or this word, or maybe one word. So those are simple things that could probably move rather quickly, and we could start with the city attorney rewriting, you know, the ordinance to replace them. So I would agree with you that the code thing may be painless.
And we'll include sign ordinance in there. Fred Riley sent us each a copy of the sign ordinance suggestion. There's quite a bit of discussion on that. Well, maybe not, but there's quite a bit of law on that before we can come up with it.
Okay, Fred.
Want to pick a date?
Well, usually we do it on the third Monday, which is the 19th. I don't know what everyone's schedule is, mayor, if they're not...
I'm not available until the 22nd, so I'll be 19, 21st, 22nd. I'm not going to be, I could come telephonically, but I have comments for sure on that stuff, so.
It's a pleasure of the council. The next Monday is the 26th.
26th?
26th is what?
26th, at 6:00 PM? Okay. So that'll give everybody a little bit of time. So we'll confine it pretty much, unless something else comes up, confine it to the sign ordinance and the code, and then next month, we're going to hit that up with planning book.
And then we'll plan that on the third Monday.
Yes, I think that'll work.
So if you can plan whatever that third Monday is in May, I'm not sure. I'll top my list, if I like, the 17th or 18th.
You've got a couple of months off with an work session, so we do, we have to get that too.
Okay. And that's all I have. And the, Patty did a lot of work researching. I just want to say the Muni code that came back from, from Muni code, we're getting ready to send that, that portion from the November election to the state. And I think, you know, it took them a little while to decipher it and whatever they do to their massage, but Patty reviewed it and everything looks good, so we'll be forwarding that for the state to certify.
Probably November is it, or...
And then March is, we're starting the process now.
And Fred, because you have nothing else to do, I don't want to lose sight of that, that the next election is the final installments of the code, of the charter review recommendation. So we've got plenty of time. It's not till next March, but I'm just, I'll say it now because, you know, when we get the budget, we start forgetting about these things. So there is, I think, four, maybe four amendments, as I remember? So there's a bunch still that are coming. But not as important. We took them in the level of importance, so now we're getting to the lesser ones. Yes, any questions for Lynn? Go ahead.
Yeah. I am still struggling with our multimedia system, and I believe everyone on the council is. It's better, but it's still, it's not good enough. Is there a plan?
I think we're going to have to bring someone in similar to what Bel Air did and let them come in and try to help us. But we've got to start on it, and I think going forward, it's, it's just a process of moving.
I see where some immediate improvements could be made at very little money, and I want to talk to you about them just because it's a struggle. It's a struggle for all of us, and I'm not sure how council member Gunn is doing on his side. Can he, council member Gunn, can you hear us?
It is a struggle. It is a struggle. I endorse exactly what you're saying. We've got to make some more improvements on this thing. It's just, before, we can really embrace this thing, and use it effectively, we need to make some improvements.
I can't hear a word you said.
Says we need to make more improvements. It's a struggle.
Yeah, I can't hear, I can't, I can't hear a word Glenn Gunn just said.
What I think I would like to do is work with Lynn and establish a preliminary budget for a quick fix.
Right.
And then a long-term budget for the final fix, because this is ridiculous. It's not your fault, but we definitely, we can be better.
Yeah. I mean, there's guitar players who play the local bar that have a better PA system, and I'm not kidding. Okay? You can hear them. Sometimes they're too loud. Glenn Gunn is talking on the Zoom. He's 10 feet away from me. Frank can't hear him. He's two feet away from me. I can't hear him. John Hanzig is shaking his head from the audience. I can't. Jody Shirley is shaking his head, her head in the back of the audience. I mean, we're not even holding a good public meeting with this. Everybody has to be able to hear what's going on. It's critical, so.
Right. It may be upgrading the speaker system or other things, which Vice Mayor and I have a special...
Yeah, microphone.
Well, we applied a one microphone. It seemed that it did pick it up a little better. So that, that's part of the process, too, to apply those, get rid of these, and by the bar type. But we want to find the type that you can push a button to turn it on, because the one we bought as a test doesn't have a button to it. But it did, it picked up. We used it on Vice Mayor over here. It did seem to work well, so hopefully that'll help part of the system.
Any other questions for Lynn?
I have.
Yes, I have.
I have two questions. Lynn, I've asked you to, have you looked into that light on the end of Donato, right there at 22nd? Turning it up, because when you go down 22nd to take a left on Donato, it is so dark, and you have to be aware of it. If you just take it like you normally would, you could easily hit somebody. So can we look, it's the Donato and 22nd, it's a light right there?
Right, there at the intersection.
Yes.
Yeah, we did turn it up a little bit, but we can...
I'm still, yeah, coming out at night, and don't walk your dog because you guys both get hit, because it's, it's really dark. It's scary. And then second, when we were on that Zoom call with the sheriff, Gulteri, I asked him about looking at percentages of use with Bel Air Shore. Did he ever get back to you on that?
I've asked him about that a couple times, and I haven't got any response about it other than they, they were going to work on it. Well, it's beyond that. So what, what, just so the council understands what could happen, he could come back and say, well, we'll just take that deduction out and you pay for your own. That's what could happen, which is about, I think it was $35,000 if I remember right.
And 30s.
Now, a question, is that the sheriff's choice, or is that something the council, our council could? I'm asking for a point of information because I have no idea. I'm not proposing anything. I'm just saying, is that something we can decide to do if we want? Or is that something the sheriff has to do to make separate contracts, or they do their own stuff, we do our own stuff?
Well, I think the feedback from the council would be very important to give to him, and...
I just don't know, who makes that decision?
Well, he, at the time, I guess, you know, I'm just speculating, at the time, the sheriff, well, I know it for a fact, at the time the sheriff became our service provider, our police department did that service for Bel Air Shore. So at the time, when the sheriff took over our contract, 2007, I think it was, he gave us, whatever the number was at that time, he gave us a credit for doing that service as one of our deputies. So...
Just, just asking for your concerns.
Yeah. I've asked Captain Lainer a couple times about that. He's basically told me, he knows they're supposed to be working on it. The only concern I really have is, are we willing to take, if they come back and say, well, if, you know, on the other side, do you want to take the additional expense and say, don't do anything over there? You know what I'm saying? Do you understand what I'm saying? Okay. We're getting a credit for that police service that they're doing to Bel Air Shore in our contract. If we don't allow our deputy to do that, then we would pay that $35,000 credit, the city would.
But isn't Bel Air Shore paying that $35,000?
They're paying it, but it's a credit to our contract.
But they pay us, and then we...
No, no, they pay the sheriff directly, but the sheriff gives us a credit on our contract of $35,000.
Comes off the bottom line.
Off the bottom line, yeah. So our contract, if they decided not to do that, then we, our contract this year, as an example, would be, if it's right at five, it would be like 535 or something. But I can send you that information.
I don't understand that. I don't understand why it would go up if we were, you know, they, it should be the same in theory, right? I mean, they're...
No, no. They're giving us a credit because they're using our officer to provide that service to Bel Air Shore. So Bel Air Shore is paying the sheriff, and we're getting a $35,000 credit.
Basically, with that contract, our, our time of service, where we're receiving service from the sheriff's department would go up.
Yes.
Instead of sharing with Bel Air Shore.
Right.
It would be possible of working out their own contract.
Right.
And it would be completely separate from ours. Is that right?
Right. And basically, what I was told is they'd just go to the next city and probably give them the credit somehow. So is it a win or not? It's kind of 50/50 iffy.
Well, how much impact do we have? Because it's actually working as a sublease that we're using the sheriff.
Right.
So how much are we losing by subleasing the sheriff?
It, it depends on the day and time. You've really got to look at it. Some weeks and months, it doesn't really affect us in any way, shape, or form. Now, if there's a call to Bel Air Shore and it takes an inordinate amount of time, but you got to understand, the sheriff sends backups, okay, to these situations, whether it's in our city or that city. So it's kind of a, what I would call a wash in a way, but if you took to the amount of the contract, I think we, we looked at it, it was like 45 minutes per shift, okay, that they should devote. Well, do they devote more than 45 minutes per shift? Maybe Saturday and Sunday they might, but Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, they probably don't, you know? So that's kind of how you got to look at it.
Well, that's kind of what I was asking for, is if due to recent issues, if more time is being allotted than normal, and now the time limit is going up, and therefore we're kind of losing out, because we're, because when they're busy over there dealing with shade, they're neglecting speeders over here. So that's what I'm curious about, if that number, amount of time has gone up due to recent issues, and if so, that's just information we need. That's what I was asking the sheriff.
Right.
So keep loving them.
I will. I haven't stopped.
Good. Keep loving them.
Any other questions for Lynn?
On the traffic survey, I know they're looking at reducing the speed or questioning the speed on Gulf Boulevard. God bless anyone that's north of 12th Street, north of Spring Break, anything like that. I don't know how you get out of your residence. I mean, it's a total mess going up Gulf Boulevard into Clearwater and coming back.
I can tell you how you get out, sideways.
Well, I don't know why we can't put in the, excuse my question, they're called like burp lights every now and then, they stop the traffic. Because if you live there, I don't know how you get out. I don't know how you make a left, I don't know how you make a right. Well, that's, so now we're captive in our city. I think a couple burp lights, they don't have to be activated at all times, just on heavy weekends, it might...
I think the real problem is not, it's not the roads, it's not, it's not the sheriff's department, it's the city of Clearwater Beach. We're basically, you know, hostage by the city of Clearwater.
You have, you have cars back all the way up beyond Publix coming in. They're not going here, they're passing through. I mean, that's what I'm saying, but it impacts anyone from 12th Street. And it's actually now they're starting to come into Rainy Rocks, and it's impacting the suburb. And I really think we should look into it.
Frank, just so you know, and I, I knew this, you know, and we've seen it, Lynn and I have met twice with the planning people from Denalis. We didn't have that suggestion. I think we threw every other suggestion at them. And, you know, we didn't come away with too much that they were actually able to do for us. They're supposed to be monitoring this light here at the intersection. I was sitting in a 40-minute jam, so I saw how well that was working the other week. And, you know, it was backed up almost to the hard worst, or it was backed so far, it was, it was one of the worst I've ever seen. I don't know, that might work. I mean, we, Lynn and I have met with this guy, Tom Washburn, a few times. That's what got us that other thing. One of the observations is, and I've actually put myself into the jam a few times just to see what was holding it up. One of the things we found was that a lot of people were slowing down at the real big mansions, the baseball players' mansion, stuff like that. And that's why we put that sign there, that hopefully they would actually maintain it. But Linda showed us the results and they're going slower at the sign because I think they're sightseeing. Because a lot of times it frees up and the deputies, when I had spoken with them, they were saying it's freeing up after 17th, 18th Street. If we put those in, which is a good idea, the question is just how much of an effect does it have on people coming over the bridge then? So the planners have to tell us that, you know? And it does give us the break. I feel for the people, but we're kind of out of solutions because, you know, we had talked about doing something with the bridge, it can't be done because it was built with federal money, so you can't do anything to, in any way, tax people, toll people, anything like that. So that's not happening. We sure as hell can't buy property and make the roads bigger, that's not happening. So I, your idea is good if it doesn't back it up even further, but maybe talk with Tom Washburn and get these ideas out to him. But that light, by the way, I sat in the same traffic jam for all you did, it was 40 minutes.
Yeah, I did it the last two weekends for two or three times. So it's been, I understand the pain this way. I, maybe I was lucky, but, you know, I waited at, let's see, it would be 19th Street, probably five or six minutes one day because I had the deputies doing, checking to see if people were sidetracking, you know, going from like Morgan or Hibiscus shooting down. I haven't got that report yet, but they did do some of that on the weekend. But I waited three or four minutes, you know, to get out to make a left turn. If you made a right turn, I did that too, made a right turn, went down, you got down faster and you made a left turn and went into Morgan Park and came back out, then you could make a right turn and go back the other way. That's a heck of a way to get around the city, but, you know, when you're looking at other issues. I went to the Marina, down there, it does, it does break up.
Let me add to that, just so that you can feel our pain. If we manage to get out, and let's say we want to go to Publix, we may not be able to come home as soon as we get in our car, it may take us 45 minutes to get back.
That's right.
It's relentless. And as far as people exiting their neighborhood, if we picked on one street and said, this is the one that you activate to get out, well now you've just, you've burdened John Hansick's street because I think he volunteered for it.
I think he did too.
You tell them.
Basically, you would be funneling all of the north side traffic down one street, which is going to create another problem. I've also noticed that if there is a gap, if there's a gap at all, and they see you easing up to get ready to leave, they punch it every time. It's a nightmare and.
Turn out of here sometimes.
That's how it works. I don't know what the fix is, but right now the fix is, don't leave after 10:00 a.m. on a Saturday. And if you do, don't plan on coming back until 5:00.
You're prisoner for the weekend?
Yeah.
Publix opens at 7:00 a.m. I've been there just for that reason, to avoid traffic on the way back.
No, there's no easy solution, folks. And, I mean, you know, I'll say, I tried. I was personally attacked because I made suggestions with the city manager, and I mean, it was nasty, as if I was going to get bags of money delivered to my house from a toll bridge. We were trying, folks, and it turned me off, I got to tell you, okay, some of the stuff that was said. So to paraphrase Barack Obama, you know, if you like the traffic, you can keep the traffic. If you want it fixed, okay, then support the people that are trying to fix it, don't attack them. Because I don't know that there's an easy solution. Frank has made a good suggestion, I've never heard this before, it should be looked into. But please, don't crucify him if it turns out that it's not good. He's trying, okay?
No, no, we'll have another discussion with Tom and see what their thoughts are. Because it's a county road, that's part of the whole process.
Yeah, well, yeah, we can't do anything without the county. Both roads are county, so.
Okay.
Anyone else for Lynn? There was a citizen hand, I think he has a question for you. You have John and June Vansgoy, okay?
I have something.
I'm sorry, wait, go ahead, Rita, let's do council first.
Lynn, I've been getting a lot of feedback noise coming from over there. Is it, are you on Zoom with it?
I've got it turned down, so.
Okay, because I'm hearing everything they say twice.
Well, that's part of the process.
Part of the new thing, okay, I just wanted to let you know because I didn't know if it was something you could do over like Newt.
It's you.
Okay.
Any other council comments before I go to the citizens? June, so your hand up first, then John will do you next, okay?
June Vansgoy, 7th Street, Bel Air Beach. Couple things, I was just wondering, first of all, we don't live at, obviously, at the end of 7th Street, but they're doing that sewer project and I noticed the equipment is even bigger. The city used to have some beautiful, like, hedges there to kind of give it a, kind of a barrier so you couldn't really see it from the road. I mean, the houses, I noticed this yesterday, the houses around that are going to have to see that one. The one on the right, I don't know those people, but you pull into their driveway and you see this big equipment right there. Is there anything the city can do as far as trying to unify it a little bit? I mean, we're very thankful to the county for fixing the flooding issue, Lord forbid. The second thing is, is this city willing to roll the dice?
Can you talk into the mic sometime?
Is this city willing to roll the dice for 45 minutes a day? First of all, for sharing the sheriff with anybody. Now, I do know they back each other up through cities, but if you are sharing a sheriff and two incidents come up at the same time and the other city sheriff is tied up, you're making them make that decision as to who they have to go with. I mean, you're making the officer make that decision. This city should be looking at its citizens' safety first. So I believe that this council needs to take a serious look at spending that $35,000 in a misorbitance and making sure that this city is safe first, making our citizens number one. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn, wouldn't they, if there was a dual call, would they bring backup on something like that typically?
Yes.
I mean, this is going to ask the sheriffs, wouldn't, I mean, isn't that, wouldn't that be a procedure?
Yeah.
Because they have 3,000 men and women if they need them.
They bring it different times, there's people from Bel Air Bluffs over here, there's people from Indian Rocks, no, they bring backup.
But if we ask one of the gentlemen in the back?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Sheriff, would you, Sergeant, would you come out, want to do, speak on this in terms of, if you get a dual call, you know, let's say you're, and even, I mean, for that matter, you know, you're in Bel Air Shore or Bel Air Beach and then they get a call in Bel Air Shore, how do you handle that? What's the procedure? John, we got you right after the sheriff, okay?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I came in late, starting switch with the sheriff's office. I came in late, so I can only hear bits and pieces back there, so if you could repeat the question, please.
Sure. The comment from the citizen was, Councilmember Aki had brought up, I guess this goes back a year ago, when we had the sheriff's contract, there's an allocation, I think it's around $30,000, $35,000 for the patrols in Bel Air Shore. And she had raised some questions at the time, she's raising them again, asking Lynn if he got an analysis from the sheriff. So the first question is, where do we stand with that analysis? Secondly, the next, the citizen question is, if we were to say, you know, is there a situation where, let's say, the sheriff could be on call in Bel Air Shore and then would have to not do a call in Bel Air Beach or vice versa? On a call in Bel Air Beach, you only have one person, does that leave Bel Air Shore uncovered? Or, you know, what I just said is, I think you get on the walkie-talkie and get some more people in, but I'm not quite sure what the procedure is.
Okay, I'm still not quite sure of the question. I can't comment on the allocation.
Right.
That is not my position to comment on. Obviously, I'll defer that to the sheriff. But in regards to the safety of the citizens, I did hear that question presented. I don't see that as a concern because, yes, Bel Air Shore and Bel Air Beach does share one deputy. However, we have Bel Air Bluffs, we have me, we have my corporal, we have Indian Rocks, we have the unincorporated deputies. So I can assure you, if there's ever something that is serious of nature, I'm going to allocate deputies to come over here and assist. And as of, as long as I've been here in the city, that's never been an issue. So I hope that answers the question. If it doesn't, I'm here to answer more.
It does for me, I'm not sure about the rest of the councils. I mean, we're both fortunate, both cities, I listen sometimes to the Bel Air Shore meetings and they have equally good crime statistics like us, so it's, you know, we have one arrest. We had no arrests in the city this time, so I mean, we're, you know, we're usually pretty good when it comes to that type of thing. But I think that answered the question as to what happens if there is something at the same time.
Okay.
Anybody else? Sheriff up here? Thank you, Sergeant, I think that takes care of it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. John Hansick. This is for Lynn Reeves now. This is the Lynn Reeves meeting.
John Hansick, 22nd Street. In the beginning of Lynn's briefing, you spoke about the island here at 12th Street and the palm trees that are doing surveys. Maybe the county should consider taking that whole island crosswalk completely out. In my mind, it makes no sense that you have that crosswalk within two blocks of the crosswalk right here at the intersection of Gulf and Bay. That's contributing to backup on the right turns. Not going to solve the problem on the weekends, I guarantee you. And I think I heard a comment about a traffic control device on the weekends, but I can tell you too from personal experience, made the mistake of going to Lowe's on a Saturday. It's heavy Christmas. Clearwater Laguardia Road, from there, over an hour, all I could see was traffic all the way down Bay. Went over here to 8th Street, come down Indian Rocks, another mistake, backed up there. And then the intersection was a goat rope, I can't use the Navy terminology, because people were sitting in the middle of the intersection trying to make left-hand turns and through traffic couldn't get through, took over an hour to get home. We have come to the conclusion, my wife and I, we get our stuff done before 10:00 on Saturday and then we stay home the rest of the dag gum weekend. And even trying to cross the street from 22nd to go use the access by the motel can be challenging. But then I forget, at the next parking lot, you got crosswalk near there and then the next one is way up the street before you get to Morton Park. So sometimes we get lucky, people stop and let us cross, but I don't know what we can do either. So just made a comment, but take to the county and ask them what about taking out that whole dag gum crosswalk there at the parking lot.
Well, they're looking at, their recommendation in this intersection study is even looking at the two left turn lanes to get people at least Gulf Boulevard or under Causeway, but they're looking at, they did recommend to take the trees out because of visibility. They are looking at taking the islands out but leaving the crosswalk, which I guess in my mind, it would, could create a problem for the people on 12th and 13th Street because there's no island there, because what could happen is the, where the island's at, that does stop people from lining up all the way down Gulf Boulevard and making a left turn. But, you know, the consultants will look at that and get back to us. But they did recommend at least leaving the crosswalk because there's a lot of activity on 12th Street that goes across to the beach access.
Well, one more observation too, you know, recently, somebody was between 12th and 13th or 14th going to cross Gulf Boulevard with their dogs, I guess to go to the beach. It is crosswalk, just crossed right there at whatever the side street was. So, you know, some of this is personal responsibility.
That's true, people crossing where there's no crosswalk all the time, doesn't matter where you're at. It could be a Bel Air Bluff, Clearwater Beach, Indian Rocks, you know? All of us have driven that way. Think about all the people you see going across at a street intersection, there's no crosswalk. So that's just.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hansick. Any other citizens? Yes, more?
Mark Luisa Dryan. With the island that John mentioned taking out, when that was first put in, it actually helped the people going north because they could pull out of their streets and make a left turn. If that island is taken out, all it's going to do is back up everybody in the middle lane. So how is anybody going to get out on the weekends to make the turn going south? I don't know what the answer is. I brought it up at a council meeting a while back, put a bridge in, another one. Where are you going to do it or how are you going to do it? I don't know. Another subject, just to go back a little bit, with the sound in this auditorium, I worked in industry for 38 years and I worked with a lot of AC systems. This one is designed poorly. Right now I can hear you and I can hear myself sitting back there, you can't hear a thing. So I think we ought to do an experiment, Lynn maybe, and just shut that off and see if everybody in here can hear. Because the amount of noise that my hearing makes, it just drives you nuts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. As you're speaking, I'm getting signs from the people sitting in the back, they can't hear, Mike Kelly's family, Jerry Shirley, yeah.
What'd you say, Mark?
Like I said, they have better systems at the local bar for the guy who plays guitar, so, yeah, we got to do better, really. We're a premier city, right? So come on. Okay, do you have anything else?
No.
You sure? All right, City Clerk, you only have about a 45-minute presentation, right? You're good, right?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, we move to City Council. For the new members, the way I do this is, on an even month, I do it alphabetically and Vice Mayor and myself get the last comments, but I go alphabetically, so it's an even month, I start with Robin Aki and I work my way down. Next month, I'll start with Rita Swope and work my way back up. So this way you're not always in the same spot. So it is an even month and Robin Aki, you're up first.
First off, I'd like to say congratulations to Frank and Leslie and Glenn for winning. Happy to serve with you guys, looking forward to it. Other than that, I think I've already made my comments towards, sorry Lynn, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Frank?
Yes, just two things. I know there's litigation between Bel Air Shore and private citizens of Bel Air Beach with the beach, beach access, you know, umbrella shade structure. On March 27th, a sheriff deputy came out, was sitting on the beach with my granddaughter. Okay.
Yes. That's it. I don't know, you have to come down and read that. Real close, I can, I can hear them.
I'm sorry. Anyway, deputy came up and you could see, she's in one of these tents, which is no higher than probably two and a half feet high, okay? It's behind, it's actually lower than the first portion of the seawall. She says, you're going to need to remove that, she's really polite, she said, but that's a shade structure, the child in it is three years old, you can't see the baby, he's six months old in there. All right. I understand with this litigation that this could go on, in my opinion, for years. I would love to see the council get together with Bel Air Shore, form a committee to try to work something out, get this thing resolved sooner than later. I'm sure there's no residents that want to make a dime on this thing, they just want to go to the beach. If you leap, if you read the two Bel Air Shore, Bel Air Beach access ramp points, I don't think we've done our job in the past to keep, you know, non-residents out. I think there's a lot of ideas that could come up with. I think Bel Air Shore's has got some legitimate complaints about non-residents. I seen, and I'm not sure they're Uber drivers, I know they're not my kids because I seen people tip the driver when they get out. My kids never tipped me when I dropped them, so. But, I mean, and they get out and they go on the beach and they, what I'm trying to say is they don't read the signs, they just go on the beach, umbrellas or whatever. The deputies are.
The deputies are overwhelmed, it's not their problem. They patrol it maybe once a weekend. They set up their umbrellas or whatever, their coolers or whatever, trash the beach, leave. And it impacts the responsible citizens of this town, okay? Because I've got neighbors that don't want to go to the beach because they can't take the umbrella, they got no, 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 whatever. And they know the law. But it impacts us. But you come here on Saturday, you'll see cars parked here, they're going to 12th Street, they're going to Sixth Street. You see a mayor going down the street?
Absolutely.
And just one other thing, I got a request from a citizen on 102 Fifth Street about her Miami curb is actually like sinking a little bit. It's, it's causing a.
Is that Sheila?
Yes.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Frank. Glenn Gunn? Nothing? Okay. Leslie Nataro?
Nothing.
Rita Slope?
Nothing.
David Dennis?
First off, I'd like to welcome our new council members. I look forward to working with you, at least for the next year. Also, to Jody Shirley and Marv Bean, it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with you. And I know you're not going anywhere. I see names coming up for volunteering and things like that. Please stick around. You've made a serious impact on the city and it's greatly appreciated. Other than that, I apologize for being out. At the last meeting, I was forced into vacation and it rained the entire time. That's the payback, I guess. But I'm looking forward to reviewing the code, all the suggestions. And I think that there's probably a couple of things that were missed or just recently came up. I've discussed some of that with Lynn and I'll be bringing that up at the next meeting. Other than that, I appreciate everyone coming. And, thank you.
Thank you. I'll let go be welcomed to Frank Banker and welcome back to Leslie Nataro and again, and of course Glenn Gunn, who he won again. Thanks to Jody Shirley and to Marv Bean for excellent careers on the council. Frank, I appreciate what you've said here. You know, because of my special position, I can't really get into too, too much. I just will let you know a fact that might help. Before all of this stuff, when they, when they passed the ordinance across the street in, back in June of last year, I had reached out personally to the mayor, just as friends, when we were friends, and I asked him, come on, this is a mess. He understood that. Robert Schmidt understood it. He asked me for a month, July twenty-first, and this council agreed that Lynn Reeves was going to represent the city to go across and ask in July twenty-first to see what could be done. And then three of us, Glenn Gunn, Jody Shirley and myself, went as private citizens and very nicely. Jody Shirley, I remember, gave all the options that we had. These, you know, basically, some of them came from rich shops, some of them came from a work session about gate controls and, you know, things that would give you stepped up police patrols. They rejected that. Glenn Gunn had some suggestions. I had some suggestions explaining to him about how the legalities of easement, no threats, just saying, you know, I bought here so I can go to that beach. They didn't do anything. And Lynn Reeves multiple times said, we can work this thing out, come on, let's work this thing out. And they rejected him. So that's when the letter started. And then two months went by, the deadlines long extended passed up then for them to do something and they didn't do anything. And then I had no choice but to take the legal action because my property is being affected, so is yours and everyone else's. So I'm taking, I can only take the fight right now for myself, but everybody knows that I'm thinking about them. And I mean, that's the way it is.
My comments, Mr. Mayor, is not against anyone.
No, I know.
lawsuit or whatever. It's just, I think this is just beyond ridiculous anymore.
This is heartbreaking to see a young child in a tent and then to be told that. And I'll tell you something, I'm going to say this publicly, we don't, please, this is litigation files, so I don't think it's a record. It's out there, people have it. We got a similar picture. And I didn't take this picture, but it is allegedly one of the council members sitting under a cabana drinking a beer out of a glass bottle from two weeks ago on the beach there. So while the little baby can't shade themselves, they are, yes.
That's a quite not our council member.
It's not our council member. No, no, I'm sorry, it's Bel Air Shore, yeah. It's a Bel Air Shore council member, yes. I'm sorry, no, it is not one of our council members. And that picture's going to be going around and it's just, it's sad. It's just sad. So to the extent that people want to do something, they always try and work something out. That option is always there, but it's getting worse and not better. And this is, I have videos of people, people sent me videos of people being, one person almost got the ticket and it was an eight-year-old girl watching her parents getting busted on the beach because they had an umbrella. So that's all I'll say about it because that's, those are facts. I won't give you any other information, but thank you. And please keep a, keep a watch out. This is not right. I only have one thing and it's something I just want the city to under, to know. I have served for a year now on mayor's council as representative to the emergency services of Pinellas. And that's police, the fire, the ambulance. And at the last meeting, I was elected to the executive board of that. So I'm going to be serving on the executive board for the Pinellas Emergency Services Committee. So that's a big honor for me and I'm really glad to assume that. And should anybody have any issues with any of our emergency services, police, fire, ambulance, please let me know because I have direct input now to that. Well, I always had direct input, now I guess I have more input. So I'm looking forward to that new role. So I'll be doing that for the next year. Other than that, that's all we have right now. We have a work session coming up on the twenty-sixth, that's at six PM. And we'll go back on our regular schedule. I saw a cardboard meeting here on April fourteenth at three PM, so if you're available for that. Other than that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Frank Banker, second Leslie Nataro, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Everyone have a good night. Thank you for coming.